Okay, we'll call the Tremont Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, January 23 to order at 6:00 PM. Role call, we have Lawson Wilson, Ben Harper, myself, Mark Good, and Brett and Beth have both said they are unable to make it. I know Brett has a work conflict, I don't know about Beth, but I will take a motion to excuse their absences.
I assume so.
Second.
Motion and second to excuse Brett Witham and Beth Gott. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, adjustment, adoption of the agenda. We don't have the public, we have a public hearing for Bass Harbor Marine, and it's not on the written agenda, but I'll take a motion to put the public hearing, open the public hearing after discussion of the minutes.
I assume.
I'll second, and then after discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and second to schedule the public hearing for Bass Harbor Marine, or put it on the agenda for after the minutes. Any discussion?
Was it?
It was properly, it was properly noticed, yes. Jesse said that, and also Katie, so, okay.
Yep.
That's it? Okay. All in favor? Okay, thank you, folks. Okay, minutes, which just came in tonight. Is there a reason that, that she didn't have them done, or?
Jesse didn't get a chance to upload them until two days before I have.
Upload the?
To YouTube.
The tape. Oh, okay, gotcha.
So she didn't have them until two days before I made it back in.
Okay.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion and second to accept the minutes of January 9, 2024. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay. Okay, let's open the public hearing, you know, open the public hearing at 6:03 for Bass Harbor Marine. Any comments from the public?
They'll all plug at once.
At least we're gonna wait a minute, anyway. Yeah, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing at 6:04. How's that? Okay, proposed land use ordinance changes. Geez, now, now I wish we'd taken Bass Harbor Marine first. Let's go through this, though, since it's on the agenda. What, what you've done, Katie, is you have changed everything. This is a, a new copy, right?
Correct.
Of the proposed. I did see something on, well, it's page 62 here, under review authority, the lettering is off, under code enforcement officer.
I didn't see that it deleted the B. That was supposed to be B.
Yeah.
It was supposed to fix that, my apologies.
Okay, but I just want to point that out, so that'll be corrected, huh?
Yes.
Okay, and we have, we did approve a couple things the last time.
And I didn't take them, I just didn't print them.
You didn't print them, okay, that, that was, you know, that was confusing at first, but it was in the minutes. Okay. So those were approved, so what we have here is definition for commercial solar energy system, industrial, and residential solar energy systems.
I left them in there just in case you wanted to look them up, because you asked me to change each one of them. I know we tabled the rest of solar, but you asked me to take off the kilowattage hours and the roof mounted, so that is the correct one. And on industrial, the, I left a blank where the acres and surface area is.
Oh, yeah, I did see that, okay, yeah, I did. And remind me, why, why are we concerned about the number of acres? At this point, we're not even allowing them in town.
No.
Yep.
I just didn't know if we were going to have a fallback of it, just in case somewhere along the line it is incorporated, but I left it there because nobody said yea or nay officially.
I say strike that sentence for now.
Just, just end it at?
At, and/or fuels.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Utility power and or fuels. Oh, I see, that's the last sentence, right. I missed that last period.
The only issue that could arise is that there is no limit.
Right, I understand that, but if we're developing standards, we're not allowing them now, and if we develop standards, we're gonna have to change the ordinance anyway, and that could be incorporated at that time, is my thinking on that. I don't.
Have you talked to Tanvi about these definitions?
She hasn't been in contact with me yet about it.
We've, let me remind you, to get something on the warrant, we've got to do this tonight.
I know. I'm worried that it, if it's more confusing than it needs to be, then we just change it a year from now.
Are you talking about the industrial one, specifically?
Yeah, and I was looking at the difference between commercial and industrial, and realizing that it might be actually pretty difficult to, it's potentially hard, using these definitions. I think it might be hard for a CEO to tell the difference between a commercial and an industrial system, that was smaller than 5,000 square feet. If it was more than 5,000 square feet, then that's an easy delineation.
But we also have, we, under commercial, primarily or solely for onsite commercial use.
Right. I think it's pretty hard for anybody to tell where that energy's being used. Even the people who own the system might have a hard time telling where that energy's being used. And so I think that's the, that's the piece of it that seems hard to enforce, and therefore hard to regulate, because most systems feed into the grid, and once they're connected to the grid, it's pretty, it's really hard. It might be impossible to actually be able to tell where exactly that energy that's being generated is being used. And so, I think from a regulation standpoint, I think that we can regulate size much more easily than we can regulate how it's being used. It's sort of like saying, like, a boatyard is only allowed to make boats that are going to be used in Bass Harbor, and that'd be sort of possible for Harbor Master to, like, track that. That's actually easier to tell than electrons. So I guess by, I don't think it's the end of the world if we have a definition in there, it's actually confusing for the next year, but I think my recommendation would actually be to not include, or if we do anything, we should just say, and maybe it's actually, we shouldn't use commercial, residential, and industrial, we should use small, medium, and large, and we should talk about square footage, or, you know, square feet and surface area.
We do have square footage in commercial.
Commercial and residential.
And residential, yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Since we aren't going to have a solar ordinance at this time, should we have nothing in here, including definitions and all the table, or should we have something to cover until we have that ordinance?
I think it makes more sense to have something in there.
Yeah, I, I think that's what we're doing, yeah.
If it's not workable, next year we can change it.
Yeah. We agree that somebody, anybody could put panels on their roof, or in an array in their yard, on a structure, it's CEO approval for the structure, rooftop, there's, you know, you just go ahead and do it. And, and the same sort of deal with, say Hanson wants to do it, or a boatyard, but where it's separate, the industrial is like the large solar farm.
So that is?
Whose sole purpose is just to sell electricity.
Right, I guess I'm, and with that, so then we're asking the CEO to determine the, how a project's gonna be used, which seems tricky, or not, you know, like, that if somebody were to come in and say, I'm gonna build a.
I don't, what are you worried about? I, I.
Okay, so I'm, I think that I'm worried about somebody wanting to build an industrial, we're talking about where they're building a smaller than 5,000 square foot solar farm to sell to somebody else, and that being, it'd be pretty hard to tell, tell that that's what's happening, and being able to, and I guess what I'm suggesting is that maybe it's okay, if it's small. What we don't want is somebody building a 6,000 square foot array for any purpose, or a 5,001 square foot array, and if that's what we want, then I think that, like, keeping the, the size makes a lot of sense, but I think it's pretty hard to enforce the how an array's gonna be used.
How much electricity are we talking about?
A lot, I don't know.
And why do we care what they do with it?
I don't think we do.
If they're using it for the business, and then machinery changes, lights change, and you're not using as much electricity, okay, we're gonna pump it back into the grid.
Right, or it's a business that only operates in the wintertime, so in the summertime, it's sitting on off to grid, like, I mean, I think that.
Why doesn't onsite allay your concern?
Because I don't know what that, like, I don't know how you could tell, like, if it's being used onsite or not.
Well, I mean, a solar farm would just specifically be for power to be out, but not for any other use. It would, like, it would be just like the, I mean, we're using the power from our solar panels, but it would be just that, just a lot with that.
Right, so there's no, the array that's on the landfill, there's no consumption happening on the landfill, and so that array, I think, according to this, might not, I don't know if it's more or less a 5,000 square feet, but let's, for this conversation, if that's larger than 5,000 square feet, then we wouldn't, that would be sort of non-conforming, which the board can decide to do, but I would not vote for that. I think that we should allow the town, or anybody, to be able to build an array up to 5,000 square feet. I'm not advocating for larger than that at this point, and to be able to use that power in whatever ways person will allow them, and that, I don't think that the planning board, or the CEO should, has the ability to be able to tell or regulate where that power's being used.
Does it say that we do?
Well, if, as this is written, you're not allowed to have an industrial solar energy system in Tremont, and the only thing that makes an industrial solar energy system what it is, is that it's being used offsite, so it's an array that doesn't have a use onsite. That gets a little bit, it's very clear for the municipal array, assuming that that is a property, it's a separate parcel from the town office, I don't know that that's true, but let's.
In the school, yeah.
But, but like, on somebody's house, if they have a big array in a small house, a small electric load, like, what's that ratio, and are we trying to say that you're not allowed to have any? Or, and if that house gets smaller and smaller and smaller, and all of a sudden they just turn off the lights in the house, it doesn't use any electric anymore, then it would fall under the industrial, I S E S definition, can't be wrong. So I guess what I would propose is that we define I S E S based on size, not based on use. Unless, Mark or Ben, you think that we should be regulating use, in which case we should talk about how to determine that, and what, you know, if we're asking for electric bills or something that show consumption and production levels.
If they meet the standards to what we have written, once the unit is built, whether if it's for a residential or a boatyard, if their uses change, and they want to sell it, if they can sell it to the grid, I see no point, you know, you're not changing anything. That electricity that they're not using is going out onto the grid, and that, I'm assuming they would pay them for it, for the.
Yep.
So, so whether or not, you know, you, we can't change, I mean, you, we can't regulate what a use is once the, the unit is built. I mean, if you don't want to use, use it for all your house, you want to, you want, Shogga, I'm, I'm tired of electronics, I'm going to Camden, so I gotta do something with my electricity.
Right.
Send it out on the grid, so it's not changing anything there as far as what's been built, so I can't see any point, you know, let's maybe look, look at that maybe a little more long-term, look at it for next year, and then at least have something in there to protect us as to what can be built, for the time being, anyway.
So are you suggesting just getting rid of the industrial, and using the two smaller ones to cover what we could need?
No, I think he's suggesting leaving it as it is.
Right, just leaving as it is, yes.
And certainly, anything that we send to selectmen is gonna get reviewed by the town attorney, too, for better or worse, but.
The town's been working on the, sort of, expanding this solar array, building a second phase of it for about five years, or since the first one was built, the phase one, the idea was to then have a second phase, and it's gone through a few different iterations that I know of, and probably plenty that I don't know of, where the intent is to provide power accessible to Tremont residents, who don't own that land, but they own some other property, they pay some other bill in town, and assuming that it's larger than 5,000 square feet, or even if it's on, I mean, no matter what size, if this, if we were past this as written, it would make that project.
So what you're talking about is a municipal exception, exception?
Um, no, because it's not clear to me that the town would own that array. I don't know, I don't know, like, there are lots of different ways they could do it, and I'm not, and I don't, I, I would be okay if other places in town, if it happened privately in my backyard, if I wanted to generate less than 5,000 square feet. I'm still not advocating for large scale, but if I wanted to put up something the size of a large boat, boat shed, or somebody else did, I would be okay with that, and I would like the ordinance to permit that. And I think that we have said that we're okay with that size, and so, I guess my proposal would be to strike the I S E S definition, and from page 79, and then on page 24, just eliminate paragraph 34, is probably the easiest way at this point.
Eliminate, I see, strike the industry of solar thing you're saying, but what, what are you saying?
In the land use table.
Oh, 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 land use table, okay.
Right. And basically what that means is that any, I think that it would mean that any solar, maybe we have to amend the definition of commercial solar energy systems, to basically refer to anything, you know, any solar systems can be a total, up to a total of 5,000 square feet of surface area, and that, I think, provides a protection from, you know, from large scale arrays, keeps things under 5,000 square feet.
Can I ask you a question, Lawson? What happens if I have a lot, and I subdivide it into two, and I do an application for half of it at 5,000, and another 5,000 on the other half?
I think that, that you could build as many 5,000 square foot systems, or boatsheds, as you want to do. You'd hit up against lot coverage at, at a certain point, so, you know, if you subdivided it too small, there's a minimum lot size and maximum coverage. I think in Tremont, mostly your minimum lot size would be the limit, and so, that's the constraint that we have right now. And that would apply whether you're building a boatshed or a forward arm, would be the same constraints.
Sorry, folks, I kind of wish we would have moved this to the end. Well, we can debate this all night. I'm gonna call for a vote on the solar ordinance as is, or call for a motion.
I assume.
What do you?
Accept it as presented.
As presented? Okay, I'll second it for discussion. I have a motion and second on the table to present the solar energy systems, solar energy systems as in our, as presented to selectmen. Any further discussion?
That's a good.
Okay, hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Sorry, Lawson.
That's all right. We'll, we'll keep talking about solar.
Yeah, okay, let's go through these other ones here, quickly, please, if we can. We have industrial use, that's a new definition you're proposing?
Yes, because the ordinance references it several times, and there was no definition.
That looks good. What do you think?
I don't know enough about definitions, but it seems to make sense.
That's good.
Okay. Major development. Actually, this, that refers to the site plan, right? Okay, which we did send to selectmen, and they, they decided they would put that, the changes to the site plan, on the warrant. They voted to do that at their last meeting.
In May.
Yes, yeah, yeah, for the town meeting in May, yes. So we got that. Minor development, same thing, unless somebody can see something. These just refer to, basically, definitions to the changes we made to the site plan review process. On what's page 81 here, non-residential. I had a question about that. How about a hotel or motel?
Would you like me to say et cetera?
No, not new definition, but.
Et cetera may, it's too wide open, yeah. Use not for housing, including but not limited to schools, hospitals, churches, and restaurants. Well, a hotel would be non-residential.
Why are we defining non-residential?
Because it's used in the ordinance, and there isn't a definition.
Um, okay.
So it leaves it open for interpretation?
Isn't non-residential just not residential?
I mean, it could.
Okay, I, I would just like to, like, step back and ask for, like, when we start defining, I guess I wish Brett were here, or another attorney, because I get nervous about double defining things, and non-residential seems sort of like a cyclical definition. That's about as much as I can, like, talk about it, because I don't really understand how the definitions end up leading into legal interpretation of document, but I get, you know, I don't, so I guess the other question would be, like, are other ordinances, do, what do other ordinances use? Do they define not, like, does MMA have a list of common definitions, or something we can look to, as opposed to try and, like, I guess I want to avoid Tremont creating our own definitions as much as possible.
Absence of a definition, then we defer to the dictionary, so I don't know, not having one in front of me, nor a device to find, find it, I don't know what the definition is in Merriam-Webster.
Right, and at what point do you, like, yeah, I mean, we define non-native invasive species, and non-conforming use, and non-conforming structure, so maybe the problem isn't just, but it seems weird that if non-residential is just.
But do we define residential? If we define residential?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we have residential dwelling unit, residential use. Okay. So for defining residential use, do we need non-residential? See, Jane's looking it up. Thank you, Jane. Of course. Not residential, non-residential, not residential, such as not used as a residence or by residence.
It was very vague when I looked it up, so I didn't include it.
Not restricted to or occupied by residences, not provided to patients residing in a facility. Oh, like a residential, yeah, yeah. So since we define residential use here, I don't think we need non-residential. Wish Brett were here, someone with a law degree. You want to strike that for now?
Yeah, I would. When in doubt, I'd say do less.
Got that? Strike it. Okay, thank you. We got residential solar, we've already done that, residential use, use for dwelling or recreational purposes. Where'd this definition come from?
It is one other ordinance, and I cannot recall the town, I have it written upstairs.
Spaces, units, permanent use for commercial. It looks good to me.
Would that make, like, the Silco picnic area residential?
Make what?
Silco picnic area residential?
It does not include.
Yeah.
Spaces or units primarily for service to the public.
But it does include recreational purposes.
Yeah, I, I actually, I, there, that. Yeah, I, I actually, that's what was tripping me was the recreational purposes, but does not include, I was thinking more of something that you have to pay, like, let's say a fitness facility or something, or tennis, tennis court, or a tennis club. But the next sentence is does not include spaces or units primary used, primarily used for commercial income from or service to the public.
So, then tennis courts would be private, private tennis courts.
Would be, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
The state legislature defines residential property as real property located in the state domain that is used for residential dwelling purposes.
I'm trying to think because, right, didn't they define residential property by places that have residential dwellings?
You know, this is a Webster.
Yeah, I mean, thank you, Jane, I appreciate it, and without an understanding of the implications of what a definition like this would or wouldn't do, it's hard for me to know whether it's good or it'd be or not.
Calling our recreational, spaces or units primarily used for commercial income. Yeah, I'm not sure I like the definition, but I don't have anything better to come up with. Can't come up with anything better. We could send it on and let the attorney maybe suggest something. Be with an asterisk. Or we can strike it. And why do we have this in here again?
Because the ordinance references multiple things that are not defined.
Residential use?
Yes.
Did, did John, did you talk to John about this? And what was his feeling?
He helped me with the definition.
He was fine with that?
Yep.
Okay.
I said send it on and the attorney, he has an issue with it.
Yep.
Thank you, always.
Unless you have something better to suggest. Okay, that's it. I'll take a motion to send the proposed land use, uh, changes on to selectmen for inclusion on the warrant for the town meeting in May.
Aye, so move.
And is that different than the?
We did the solar already.
We're separating out the solar.
Yeah, I did, yeah. Everything but the solar, yeah, yeah. I, I need a second, are you going to second it or otherwise?
Can I second it and not vote for it?
I think Ben seconded it.
Uh, no, Ben made the motion, I'll second the motion for discussion. We have a motion and a second on the table to send the proposed changes to the land use ordinance, we've already done this solar, exclusive of the solar, on to selectmen for inclusion on the warrant for the May town meeting. Any discussion?
Just that I don't have, I don't feel like I've got my head wrapped around the implications of the residential, non-residential definitions, so.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. You got all those changes down?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And, okay, we've got Derek up next with Bass Harbor Marine. And we have, we have to do the L U O performance standards and the site plan review. And we'll need a motion on each one, correct?
Since it is the final.
Yep. Oh, that's the old one, okay. Let's do site plan review first. Utilization of the site, plan reflects the natural capabilities of the site, development is being situated to preserve natural areas to the maximum extent possible.
I'm just wrapping my head around the syntax.
Essentially, it's just changing that building.
And you had read the comments and the.
Yeah, yeah.
And the performance or the utilization of the site, site criteria. Yeah, okay. And the comments were written by you, Katie? Great. This was helpful to know.
I did have Jesse go over them as well.
And do you want to cite the reason when we make the motion?
Please.
Great. I'll make a motion that the utilization of the site criteria has been met because the plan reflects the natural compet, the natural capabilities of the site.
Second.
Motion is second to find the utilization of the site, uh, condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Three, zero, okay. I won't read the comments anymore.
That's fine.
Adequacy for the road system.
That, you know, saves the audience the suspense.
Well, they're probably right at the edge of their seats just waiting here.
I'll make a motion that the adequacy of the road system requirement has been met because the access to the site is pre-existing.
I second the motion.
Motion is second on the table to find the adequacy of the road system has been met because access to the site is pre-existing. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Three, nothing. Access into site.
I'll make a motion that the access into the site is, uh, the requirement has been met because the existing site access is to remain at adequate site distance.
Second.
Motion is second to find the access of the site condition has been met for the stated reason. All in favor? Three, nothing. Accessway location and spacing.
I'll make a motion that the accessway and location and spacing criteria has been met because the existing entrance and exit meet the requirements of the ordinance.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to find the accessway location and spacing condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay. Internal vehicular circulation.
I'll make a motion that the internal vehicular circulation requirement has been met because the proposed site provides safe movement throughout the site and the Tremont fire chief does not see any issue with the access.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to find the internal vehicular circulation condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Three, nothing again. Parking layout and design.
I'll make a motion that the parking layout and design requirement has been met because there's plenty of existing parking that meet the ordinance requirements.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to find parking layout and design condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Pedestrian circulation.
I'll make a motion that the pedestrian, the circulation requirement has been met because there's plenty of space to move around.
You don't want to walk too far off that pier, though.
Except at high top.
Other than that, yeah. Motion is second on the table to find the pedestrian circulation condition has been met. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Yep. Stormwater management.
I'll make a motion that the stormwater management requirement has been met because the proposed project does not materially impact existing conditions.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to storm, find the stormwater management condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Three, nothing again. Erosion control.
I'll make a motion that the erosion control requirement has been met and I'll cite the N R P A permit submitted as part of this application.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to find the erosion control condition has been met because an R P A permit has been submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Nothing. Water supply.
I'll make a motion that the water supply requirement has been met and there's a well on site.
Second.
Motion is second to find the water supply condition has been met, well on site, all in favor? Sewer's disposal.
I'll make a motion that the sewage disposal requirement has been met because there's no sewage or no drain in this building, plumbing ground.
Because what again?
Because there's no plumbing in the building.
Okay. Motion is second on the table to find that sewer's disposal condition has been met because there's no plumbing in the building. All in favor? Okay. Utilities.
I'll make a motion that the utilities requirement has been met because the existing utilities are to remain.
Second.
Utilites.
The utilites? Not like the utilites.
Utilities condition, uh, motion is second on the table to find it's been met, all in favor? Okay, three, nothing. Natural features.
I'll make a motion that the natural features requirement has been met because there's no change to existing vegetation, no tree removal, and no excavation or fill.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to find the natural features condition has been met for the stated reason. All in favor? Groundwater protection.
I'll make a motion that the groundwater protection requirement has been met because the proposed use is less than the two thousand gallons per day tripled.
Motion is second on the table to find the groundwater protection condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All three, nothing. Water quality protection.
I'll make a motion that the water quality protection requirement has been met because there's no storage or discharge of materials that could contaminate water.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to find the water quality protection condition has been met. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Nothing. Hazardous, special, and radioactive materials.
I'll make a motion that the hazardous, special, and radioactive materials requirement has been met because there's no proposed storage of hazardous materials on the site.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to find hazardous, special, and radioactive materials condition has been met. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Shoreland relationship.
I'll make a motion that the shoreline relationship requirement has been met because the proposed development will benefit the shoreline by stabilizing the existing shores.
Second.
Motion and second on the table to find the shoreline relationship condition has met because the project will benefit the shoreline by stabilizing the shore. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Technical and financial capacity. No.
Did we talk about this?
Can you reference the letter that was included, number seven?
Yeah. Oh, there it is. Great.
Financial insurance.
Thought we talked about it, but, great. I'll make a motion that the technical and financial capacity requirement has been met because there's no financing for this project for the letter in chapter seven.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to find the technical and financial capacity condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, three, nothing. Solid waste disposal.
I'll make a motion that the solid waste disposal requirement has been met because the proposed use will not affect the capacity for disposal of solid waste and the trash disposal is noted on the plans.
A second.
Motion is second on the table to find solid waste disposal condition has been met for stated reason. Any discussion? It's noted on the plan.
Yeah, sorry, wait, is it noted on the plans?
That's what I was just going to ask.
I'll make, I'll amend my motion to say that solid waste disposal requirement has been met because the proposed use will not affect the capacity for adequate disposal of solid waste.
I think maybe we spoke of the dumpster on site, but did not.
It's not shown anywhere, yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
I won't remember.
Okay.
That's fine.
Motion is second on the table to find the solid waste disposal condition has been met because the proposed use will not affect the capacity for adequate disposal of solid waste, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Nothing? Okay. Historic and archaeological resources.
I'll make a motion that the historic and archaeological resources project, uh, requirement has been met because no portion has been identified that's containing historic or archaeological resources.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to find the historic and archaeological resources condition has met for the stated reason. Recent storm didn't wash up any old shipwrecks or anything like that, right? Okay. All in favor? Floodplain management.
I'll make a motion that the floodplain management requirement has been met because it's identified as a flood zone and the new construction will conform with the floodplain managed apartments.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to find the floodplain, floodplain management condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Three, nothing. Okay, now we need a motion to approve the whole site plan review performance standards for Bass Harbor Marine.
I'll make a motion to, that we approve the site plan review performance standards for Bass Harbor Marine.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to approve the site plan review performance standards for Bass Harbor Marine. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Three, nothing. Okay. Okay, let's move quickly on to, I can find, performance standards for L U O, and in this case, we do not need a separate motion for each one.
You said we do not?
No, we, we don't for, for this. It's only in the site plan review, it's.
Correct.
Okay. My question.
I double check with Jesse.
What, you don't believe me?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't think, I just think it's weird, but.
It is weird, but, but.
Many things are weird about this process.
Things have been crazy ever since the site plan got changed, moved anyway, and that's for another day.
That's exactly.
Enough issues before us.
I'm sick on that day.
Buffering standards.
Pre-existing makes sense.
Yeah. We okay there, met?
Yeah. Should we speak in more complete sentences than what I just did?
Why start now? A little more, yeah, yeah.
I think the buffering standards have been met because it's existing.
Okay. Clearing or removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting.
Met because nothing's.
Nothing's.
Being proposed.
Yep. Cluster development standards?
Not applicable.
Okay. There's no cluster development. Erosion and sedimentation control standards.
A very wonderful document in small caps, which is a nice, invented in this treaty, chapter six.
Should we penalize them for all caps, or?
No, I think we should reward them, I think we should give them an extra Gold Star.
Okay, okay. We're okay there? Fill and excavation standards.
Met because none's proposed.
Okay. Fire protection standards. Yeah, this is, uh, look, I looked at it this afternoon.
You didn't?
Yeah, anything over three thousand square feet requires a fire marshal's approval, if I recall.
Below the, the.
Yep. So, we're okay there. Flood hazard area standards.
Was that met or non-applicable? I apologize.
Um, fire protection is. Fire protection is met, I would say.
Oh, we think met instead of not applicable?
I'd say met.
Okay. I'm okay with that. Although if it's... Never mind. Let's move on. Flood hazard standards? Area standards?
Do you see attachment two?
Development application submitted that cover us?
Yes. And if you look in section four as well on the side view, it does show where the normal, the high annual tide is and that they are a foot, more than a foot above that. High annual tide is 12.8 foot and the wharf elevation is 14.5.
So I was almost late, but not quite late because I just came from a meeting at Bass Harbor Library talking about how the high average, no, high astronomical tide?
Yeah.
It's not annual, it's, anyway.
That's what I...
The HAT is gonna be rising. All right. End of table.
So the library's worried about it?
Uh, no, but the people in the library are worried about it.
Okay. So that's been met?
Yes.
Okay. Parking standards? No new parkings proposed. I say it should be met instead of not applicable then. Yep. Roads, driveway, driveway opening standards?
Met.
Yeah, because... Septic waste disposal standards?
I would say met.
You agree, Ben?
Yes.
Okay. Sign standards? No new signs were proposed, so...
Met.
Okay. Soil standards? Attachment HC, erosion control plan?
My apologies.
I think it's met, but I don't think it has much to do with erosion.
It's number 10, HC, I apologize.
Oh, okay. HC. HC.
It's section 10.
In section 10? Okay.
So, section six is the road control plan?
Yes. Speaks of during construction about the soil?
Yeah, I don't think the requirement has anything to do with road control during construction.
Forty-seven.
I mean, I think it's been met because we're actually, I don't even know if there's any soil there, it's just building, new building on top.
If you look in the ordinance under soil standards, "All land uses shall be located in soils in or upon which the proposed uses, structures, and should be, and structures, can be established or maintained without causing adverse environmental impacts, including severe erosion, mass soil movement, improper drainage, and water pollution, whether during or after construction, must comply with the following standards."
Okay. Yep, that makes sense.
Okay, so, yes, met.
Met and attachment, yeah, attachment eight.
Stormwater runoff standards. Here, the erosion control plan is, comes into play.
And that also should be number 10, I apologize.
How many fingers do you have?
Eight.
I thought so.
It's titled attachment eight, so it says attachment eight on the document. It isn't called attachment eight, you're good. It's just in second, chapter 10 and chapter six.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I don't think that, you know. But I... I don't wanna read the letter, don't you do?
So we do have a plan, erosion control plan?
Right, but erosion control and stormwater runoff are different things. We don't need a full, you know, the stormwater management law doesn't kick in where less than 20,000 square feet looks like?
Yep, yep.
I guess the biggest thing that I would point to actually is the site plan. The project doesn't increase in purchase area significantly. And any store water, I mean, it's like...
Nothing's gonna change.
Yeah. So I think we're good.
Yeah.
I think I would point to the site plan and say the road control plan.
Okay. Stormwater runoff standards have been met based on the site plan?
Yeah.
Okay. Water quality protection standards?
Yeah, I think the NRPA is...
It's been met?
Good enough.
Okay. Lake watershed phosphorus protection, that's not applicable because not within the lake watershed. Lighting outdoor, none proposed. So should that be NA, or?
I think it should be met. And I'm trying to figure out if I can come up with a consistent reason why I'm treating paragraph O and P differently. And I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that, but...
In our ordinance for O, it specifically states line within seal code and hunched-in pond. So...
Yep.
I don't know if that makes a difference on how that's applicable or not.
That's all right, so then it's not applicable, whereas lighting is applicable and it's met.
There's none proposed. So any of the requirements don't come into play?
Well, except for the roads and the sign standards and the, like, sign standards and lighting standards are similarly...
And we said those were met?
Right.
Yeah.
The sign standards are still met.
So what you're debating is whether it's not applicable or?
No, I think that lighting is applicable and met.
Yes.
Okay, Ben agrees, okay. I'm all set with that then. Blasting standards?
I think are also applicable and met.
Correct.
Okay. Temporary sales of food or merchandise. I could sell T-shirts down there, or hot dogs or anything, right?
Please do.
You can't pronounce anything.
Uh-oh. Not applicable? Not proposed?
Yep.
Okay. We don't need a motion for this?
I don't believe so.
No. Okay, so he's all set then, except we need to sign, he did bring in another plan with a better block.
That's...
Approval block, yeah. Actually has lines on for us to sign.
Great. Is it the same drawing that we've got, it's just gotten a fuller?
And it's the full size, it's what was required originally that we asked for. We asked for two things during completeness. One was an approval block and the larger plan size, if I recall. Okay, is that it? Huh?
For that?
Yeah, yeah, for, whoa, no, I'm not gonna go, not gonna go home.
Still have to say.
Okay. Next up. Because of the appeals board sending this back to us because of, oh! We didn't discuss that change when we discussed the land use changes.
I was going to mention that if you look in the CEO memo, there are a bunch of lines that I asked you, or suggested you look at, that show two that were left blank from the previous table that just had nothing across from them. The change to that and then the solar ones.
But also, also, we have to have the residential so that we don't have to approve every darn doghouse and shed.
That's number 14 on the table.
We'll revisit that.
Okay.
Okay. Does that make sense, folks? I'm sorry, I forgot about that when we were...
Yeah, we'll get to that. You were saying we'll come back to it.
Yeah, let's do this first, but because the appeals board thought that because of the way the land use table was, we need to approve every shed, residential shed, or whatever, garage, until it gets changed at the town meeting. Praise, I hope so. So anyway, right now, we have Mr. Lunt, that's you. Your first name, sir? I'm sorry.
Nate.
Nate, okay. Hey, how you doing? Okay. So you have here, what you want to do is put a garage, a pre-built garage from Hillside Barnes or whatever, on property, okay? 14 by 28, 392 square feet. So we'll go through the standards for the zone. This is what you'd be doing normally before we ended up with this job, okay?
Can you say that again, Mark? You, Katie, I was looking at what you said.
Okay, before, this is, if we didn't have to do this, what they've been doing, this is what they would, this is what they would be looking at.
The CEO would take...
Yeah, the CEO would look at these things and decide whether to approve it or not based on that. Okay? So, and we don't need a vote on every single one, but I will take a motion to approve it at the end, I guess. Okay, land use standards, and if you look in the ordinance, if you're interested, it's under the residential business zone.
Should be page 12.
Page 12, great.
Yep, yep.
And Nate, Nate said, what's your relationship to Tina?
I don't know.
Okay, great. And where is the property? Oh, 132 Harbor Drive.
Yep.
I said 132.
It's kind of just before you get to Pointy Head, right? More or less.
They're going that way, right after the cemetery.
Cemetery.
Got it.
Cemetery on the left, you're right across the road.
No, they're on the same side.
Oh, you're on the same side? Oh, okay. For some reason, oh, okay. All uses are permitted, subject to lot structure, performance, and conversion standards. That's met, obviously. Lot standards, minimum lot area per residential dwelling unit or principal non-residential structure, 40,000 square feet. The lot is 60,984 square feet.
And you got that from the...
It's on the application and...
It's on the backside, should be after the line paper drawing. General information continued at the top. Do you see the sale sheet from the barn?
Yes.
It's the page right before that, look on the... Is yours not double-sided?
Some of them are double-sided, some are marked. So I've got a site plan here that show the lot, not show the...
Mine has a lot area on the second page.
So what happened was...
There's, there's the second page.
It's 1.4.
When they copied these, the original application was double-sided and those were not. So when they transferred over, it was...
The lot is 1.4 acres and I double-checked and that comes out to 60,984 square feet.
Got it. And that probably says it here on the real estate sheet too, but great, all right.
I think it just gives acreage, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. Minimum lot area per residential multi-unit dwelling, 40,000 square feet for the first unit, that's not applicable, I would say, because it's not a multi, there's no multi-unit dwelling.
Right. It's just paragraph A that we, that applies.
So the lawyer suggested that I take the exact wordage from the ordinance?
Yep.
And make this for you guys to met, not met, or not applicable for each standard?
Got it. Okay, that makes sense. Okay. And, Mark, you said not applicable.
Yeah, it's not a multi-unit dwelling.
I agree.
So it doesn't apply, yeah. 20,000 square feet for each additional unit. We have 20,984 additional square feet, according to my calculations this afternoon.
But again, isn't, there's just one house on the property, right?
Yes, sir.
Now, yeah.
So that's for a second dwelling unit?
In a multi-residential?
Yeah, you need 40,000 square feet for the house.
Right.
And then an additional 20 for...
The second unit.
For the second multi-unit.
But again, this is not applicable.
Correct.
For this?
Correct. If you look at your ordinance, it makes it more understandable. Because this is...
Paragraph B2.
Yes, B2, it is still under the minimum lot area residential multi-unit dwelling.
No, I, I put it down as met.
But it's not a, an additional dwelling unit?
Does it say dwelling unit, it just says additional unit?
But it's under the minimum lot area residential multi-dwelling unit?
Oh, okay. Okay. Oh, or per minimum lot area? Oh, okay, yeah, okay, not applicable. I'm okay with that. Anybody want to argue? Okay. Setbacks, minimum of 15 feet for residential principal and accessory structures and 15 feet from edge of right of way if lot has road frontage. It's a 30-foot setback according to the drawing, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Thirty foot.
Thirty foot, that's, yeah.
I thought that's what you said.
It is what I said, but maybe I mumbled.
The new shed will be at least 30 feet from the property line, which means we're apart.
So it's met?
Yes.
Okay. Minimum 25 feet for non-residential principal and accessory structures, that's not applicable. The height, height, 40-foot maximum, it's 11 feet high, so it's been, it's met.
Yes.
Lot coverage, 25% maximum. The lot we know is 61,984 square feet. The house and garage together are 2,000. The house and garage together are 2,361 square feet. 25% would be 15,496, so it's met.
I agree.
Okay. Building size, non-maritime-related uses not to exceed 5,000 square feet. Doesn't, right? So that's been met.
Been met.
Conversion standards, structures that existed, these, yeah, these are kind of confusing. I think they're both not applicable. Structures that existed on May 9, 1994 in their current form may convert to any use permitted by this section without regard to lot line setback requirements provided the buffering standards are met. But the structure didn't exist.
Right.
So it's not applicable.
Right.
Okay. Next one. Structures built or rebuilt after May 9, 1994 may convert to any use permitted in this zone provided that the structure complies with all standards for the new use. So is that met?
I think it's not.
Not applicable.
I don't think it's converting. We're not converting.
Yes, okay, it's under conversion standards. You're right, not applicable. That's what I had, okay. Great. So I'll take a motion to either approve or deny the garage for Tina Lunt, the applicant.
I'll make a motion, we approve it.
I'll second.
Motion second on the table to approve the garage at 132 Harbor Drive for Tina Lunt. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay. All set? You have to see her to get a permit, I guess, yeah.
What if you do if it's already met? Yes, it's met.
That's an enforcement matter.
Right, it's under the residential...
You all set then?
I'm good, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I heard Tina was looking for a cat.
She want mine?
No, I was looking for owner of the cat, I think. There's a mortgage cat that keeps hanging out, so...
Guess it's hers now.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking pretty friendly, but...
Don't sneak it in the house.
No, exactly. You ask for a cat, let him be. Thanks, guys.
See you, Derek. Okay, other. I did mention that site plan ordinance changes were approved by selectmen, but we did, we actually approved everything in a motion to send it on to the town meeting, but we did miss a couple of things.
Yes, so if you wouldn't mind looking at the table of 13A, 13F, 14 is only the one for the, what we just, what you just approved? And the rest, 30 through 34, are just the solar.
Yeah. 14, that's what gets us out of there. It requires, gives CEO approval for any residential accessory structure, any other uses come to the planning board.
Correct. There's a footnote that says residential accessory structures only. All other uses require PB.
Yep, yep, yep. Well, it's fine, that gets us out of having to approve all these things.
So when this table was taken over, the format did not go correctly and two lines were left blank. And that would be 13A and 13F. I read through the ordinances and filled them in what I thought would be correctly, but please look those over.
Wait.
Principal structures and uses, okay.
So for A, 1 and 2 family residential...
You don't think that 13A is listed here as...
No, if you follow it across, there is nothing in that.
I think that that, that, it's line 13 that doesn't have anything on it. Principal structures and uses. It's broken into six categories.
But if you look, the first one that you have across is B.
Um, no. It's the things are justified top of cell. So 13A, 1 and 2 family residential, including driveways, it's PB4, then no, then CEO. And there's principal structures and uses, doesn't actually have a category. It's, like, line 13 doesn't exist. It's 13A and 13B, 13C, 13D, 13E, 13F.
Okay, either way, F is not on there.
Oh, okay.
So you're...
Okay, you're saying we don't need anything across on 13?
That's right.
Because it's on A and B and C or...
That's right.
So we need to cross out A, the, just what I put in there for A and leave what is across at 13, 413A.
That's correct. That's what the May 5, 2021 version says.
2022?
I don't have it, 2022.
2022.
Issue.
You don't have it?
Uh-uh. I don't know where, or it's not in my binder. I don't know if I've got it somewhere else, but... But I assume that the 2022 version was like the 2021.
Yeah, when I followed that across, I did not notice that 13 should not be...
So that's like one cell.
Yes.
Is this, is this in Word or Excel?
Uh, well, that's why I changed it to the table that it is now. Because in this, even in Word and Excel, it is not straight across. Nothing is properly lined up.
Yep.
So...
And then 13F is also, like, doesn't, is on my list. Small non-residential.
So it must be when I took it from the table because, like I said, the actual version on Word is not...
Do you have the printed 22, 2022 version?
Yeah, it looks exactly the same.
And it does have paragraph F? 13F listed?
Yes.
Okay.
What I had, I had, I guess I, I don't have an excuse, I don't know.
That's what I should have said.
So never mind on that. I would like to mention that I did take a training that says all of these train, these amendments to the ordinances are supposed to be done by the planning board, not by me.
I mean, I think that's valid and worth pointing out.
I'm just stating because I just learned it.
Well, you can make suggestions and make, propose things to us. We actually approve everything.
Yes, but in the training, it says you are supposed to write out everything. I'm not supposed to, I'm supposed to present you with applications and such. I don't care that I do it, but I'm just saying I did just learn that it is not supposed to be my thing.
For me, it's a question more about staffing and...
Yeah, Jesse said that it's because of how small this is.
That, like, we don't have a planning staff.
Right.
A planning person to staff our board. So we're asking our CEO to do, like, clerical work for us. We used to ask our CEO to do minutes for us. And I think that that's, I don't, worth a conversation maybe with the selector or the town manager about, like, how much...
CEO's only done minutes in an emergency. Because we had Jan.
Oh, that's right.
And then Jan quit.
That's right, no, you're right.
Yep.
Like I said, I don't care that I do it. I don't care at all, but I did want to mention because I did just learn that, technically. So that's why I keep asking so much.
And you're, was that from, like, MMA? Like, when you say you learned that?
Yeah, it's in a training.
About CEO's responsibilities or about your...
It is the code enforcement training handbook.
Yeah. So that makes sense to me. I think that the, like, in a small town like Tremont, where we don't have a planning department, a planning staff.
But that's why I keep asking questions. So I do apologize because I'm still not used to what I'm doing.
Totally, and if I haven't said it yet, thank you very much. Like, you're doing great work. This is hard and, like, annoying.
I just wanted to say that's why I have to continue asking because I don't want to mess up anything for the rest of you.
Yeah, and, like, and then we're checking and we're finding things that are incongruous and, like, yeah, it's okay.
When we did the campground changes, I think we basically developed them, but in conjunction with the town attorney, if I remember.
Yeah, yeah. And I would suggest that, I mean, I think that these are great. Like, we're doing fine, but it's not a super smooth process, as you found. And that if we wanted to do more holistic, which I think we will want to do, a larger holistic look at ordinance changes, especially once the comprehensive plan is ratified or approved.
For sure.
On the other hand, John has come to us with proposed changes before and written them out. So it's not unusual for that to happen.
And I think it's very appropriate at this level of, like, there's this mistake here and this mistake here and we're, you know, but when we start looking at substantive changes, which I think that, like, the solar is and that's why, like, there's...
So that's actually kind of the reason I'm bringing it up. Because I don't know much of anything about solar and it's extremely hard to put down anything that, as you see, makes sense.
So that's why we want a consultant to help us write ordinances about solar or about anything that we're gonna, you know, that... And so I think that when we get into more substantive changes, we shouldn't look to our CEO to do that research and write it for us.
Okay, that's, that's my only thing. Just because I think on top of only being here for three months, it's... Once I've been here long enough and know, I hope to have this better for you.
Well, but also, like, you're not an attorney. You're not a planner, like, that's okay. Like, we don't, we don't, we shouldn't ask you to be doing, like, things that somebody who's a planner, who has, like, graduate degrees and has studied this stuff and knows how to write ordinances, we should ask them to do that. We should ask you to enforce our code and to help us, you know, go through that.
That's what I mean, but that's why a lot of this does not make a lot of sense. And I apologize about that.
No apologies needed, you're doing great, Katie.
Okay, you're doing fine, okay, don't worry about it. Okay, we're not gonna put any more on you.
Yeah, I just...
Basically, right now. But next time, look out. Let's get back to what we're discussing here. So what you're saying in 13, okay, because all those things, all those things in that line apply to either A through F, right?
Yes.
That's where the things should go, that we strike the line for principal structures and uses. I mean, the, all the PB, no, and the whatever.
Well, it's a little bit, on the verse that you're looking at, Mark, we actually eliminate the line that is 13A and we move the line that is 413 down one. So it references 13A. The only difference is in the RP and the CFMA zone, those become no's.
Oh, oh.
Those aren't changes. Like, that's just, like, that leaves the ordinance the way it already is.
Okay.
We're just, and I think that, I really, I would just ask Katie to make sure that she checks the old ordinance and make sure that as she's reformatting the table...
Yeah, this is so small, I can barely read the old one here.
I don't think we need to make any changes to chapter 13, paragraph 13 in the land use ordinance and in the land use table.
And that's it, right?
30 to 34.
Aside from 30 through 35.
That's the solar stuff, right?
Yeah.
Which we already discussed. And then there's also a new footnote, right? 16 is a new footnote?
Yes, sir.
That references what we just talked about.
Yeah, yeah, the new, oh, yes, yeah. Yeah, that just gets us off the hook for proving every garage and shed.
So I will correct those just because I didn't, unless, and this is, I apologize at how stupid this sounds, unless I have something across that line, it does not line up correctly for me. So that was my apologies.
Totally, and I definitely applaud you and encourage you to do your best at reformatting the table. Like, way to go. It's hard read. It could be better. Good luck.
Thanks. So aside from the solar, and you guys, the only question I had about the solar was, since we took ISES off, should we take number 34?
We did not take ISES.
We didn't take it off.
Oh, we're proposing it as is.
Yeah.
My apologies.
Yep. We did say strike...
The major residential or non-residential?
No, no, strike up to, yeah, the last sentence. ISES can be up to blank acres in surface area because...
I have that, my apologies.
Yeah.
There's no...
There's, but, but everything else stayed. Or stays. At least Ben and I think so.
We can visit that and have a conversation.
So, so, this is getting confusing and I wish we would have dealt with this earlier. Okay, these, there's no more, that covers everything, right? Okay.
I didn't...
We forgot about that. We did make a motion to send it on to selectmen. Do you want a motion to make sure these other things get tagged on, to add on? Why don't, let's do it to be clean, okay?
Yes, please.
What are you, what are you moving?
It's a better sense. It's something that I didn't mean. I don't know what you just asked for, Mark.
Before, when we were discussing proposed land use changes,
Yep.
we made a motion to send, well, first the solar stuff, okay? Then we made a motion to send all the rest as proposed or as discussed on to selectmen. But now we forgot about two things when, during our discussion. And that was, we forgot about the shed thing, you know, the residential garage shed thing and also the, in the land use table, that line, whatever it was, 13.
Uh, but there's no, but that's, that's a mistake. Like, I don't think we want it, we don't want to send anything about line 13.
No, but he wants, he's saying that since we talked about putting the 13 down to 13A and filling out 13F as it was and approving the CEO for the residential business on 14 is what he's asking if you want to make a motion.
Let me try this, this version then. I make a motion that we approve the changes to line 14 and...
Is it 13?
Nope.
It's 14.
It's line 14 and footnote 16.
Oh, oh, okay, yes.
And we reject the changes to line 13. We do not want to make any changes to line 13. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Do you want to talk me through it, Mark?
No, I, I got you.
Talk me through it, okay.
Okay, motion is second on the table. Well, actually, I think our other motion covered this, but, okay, to...
Just to be safe.
Yeah, to be safe. To send line 14 on and footnote 16.
Yes.
And to strike line 13.
Correct.
Okay. Motion is second on the table for that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay. Okay. Anything else, Katie?
I do not believe so at this moment. But I have heard of other people that are going to be wanting to put up sheds in the residential business. So this will probably be another thing that I have to keep bringing to you.
Now that we've done it, it wasn't too painful.
Okay.
It'll take a while, yeah, until...
How many had been done? Was it 2016 to now? A lot.
A lot. Prob, I don't remember the exact, I have it upstairs, but there's, there's probably roughly 15 to 20. And that's just records from 16, but 16 to 19 are okay. It's 19 to now, because that's when that table got out. So...
Did the table get changed or was it just put in incorrectly?
It was put in, it was...
We didn't have a table.
There was no table. It was taken from the shore land, chapter 1,000, from the DDP.
Yeah.
But when it was transferred over and they went through all of the zones and had it initially approved, that was a typo.
And something we weren't aware of because we never approved any of those things. It never, they never came before us. It was always the CEO doing it, yeah, yeah. Anyway, any more questions or...
No.
Okay, set date for the next meeting? Okay, set date for the next meeting. I'll take a motion for February thirteenth, six PM, right here.
Second?
Motion second on the table to set a date for our next meeting for February thirteenth? Ooh, the thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, six PM, right here at the town office meeting room. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? And I'll take a motion to adjourn at seven thirty.
Second?
At seven thirty?
Yeah. All in favor? Yep, okay. Did you raise your hand there, Ben?
I did.
Okay.
I don't want to be like Oak Island.
For what?
Chris of Oak Island.